Good evening, everybody. It's 5 o'clock. Like to welcome, well, first wish everybody Happy New Year. Going to be a good year, better year than last year, even though it's not starting off that way. But it's gonna end up a better year. Yeah, welcome to Kedeta County Public Hospital District Number One. Board of Commissioners, this is us, this is a special meeting because we changed the date. But like to call the meeting to order and welcome, everybody. If, Mandy, can you do a roll call?
Yes, Bob Davis.
Here.
Erica Libano.
Present.
Matt Altman.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Present and accounted for.
John Ward.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Dr. Martin, not sure if he's been able to join us. Dr. O'Brien.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
I'm here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Michelle Whirl.
I'm here.
Carrie Barr.
Here.
Vicky Maturo. Stacy Alea.
Here.
Jason Adler.
He's here.
He's muted, but I see him. Tricia, Tricia Sinek.
I'm here, thank you.
And then anyone else from KVH on the line?
Ron.
Ron, thank you. And then I know we have Greg Davidson and I'm not sure if Nancy Steiger's on there from the CEO Network.
Yes, she is.
Yes, she is. And then Ken, I see you, Ken's on here from DCA?
From KDA.
KDA, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, thank you.
Great, welcome. Thank you, everybody. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and if there's any additions or changes that need to be made to the agenda. If not, if we can get an approval.
I would move to, move to approve.
Second.
A motion by John, second by Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, consent agenda. We have next, we've had a chance to take a look at that. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Approved by Matt, second by Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Presentations. So we have a presentation by Ron and Stacy and Scott and Ken.
Yeah, so can I just do a little bit of setup here? This is a walkthrough of the planned lab expansion project. I just want to make it clear that Scott Olander is a tough audience and they have not refined the numbers enough yet for him. So this is a walkthrough of the project, but Scott will be coming back hopefully at the February meeting with solid numbers and a request to take the project to bid. So tonight, we are not talking about actually funding this project, just kind of the scope and design.
Okay, so I know we have a PowerPoint presentation and it was my understanding that Mandy was, Mandy Olson was going to share, share that with you. Thank you, Mandy, and I'll just tell you whenever to advance the slides as we get started. So as Julie said, we have Stacy Alea, the Director of Diagnostic Services, Ken Camerata with KDA, our architecture firm, and Ron Erlacher from Facilities will be giving this presentation along with myself. And I just want to thank you because we've been working on this for such a long time with the staff. I know they're very excited to be able to look at expanding the lab. We've been working with them since 2019 on this project and it's already 2021. So really excited to move forward. So next slide, please. The first thing that we did is we really recognized how important it was to involve the staff in the planning of our new design. And I think that all of you have gimbied down there and have seen how cramped the quarters are. And unfortunately, it just keeps getting a little more crowded and crowded as we bring on new equipment. In the top left photo, you can see our specimen processing area. And we're probably having about 200 or more specimens being dropped off right here. As you can imagine, all those specimens coming in from the MAC or coming in from our COVID clinic get dropped here. And then also if we have things that the courier's picking up, this is the location. Down on the bottom left, you can see supplies being delivered and there's absolutely nowhere for those supplies to go. So they pretty much sit on the floor and we kind of have to walk around them until we can find a spot to put them. On our next slide, it'll show you some of the layouts of our workstations, which tend to be sort of a little horseshoe shaped. You know, and that's fine if you've got one or two people working per shift in the lab. It's easy to get around, but when you have a really busy day shift, you'll have multiple people crammed in that same workspace. The bottom photo is especially impressive. This is our chemistry analyzer and I'm always telling Stacy, I can't believe how large the lab equipment gets every time we purchase something. It seems like it's bigger and bigger and we're to the point where the equipment barely fits through the door to get into the lab. So as I mentioned, it's been really important to have the staff input on the redesign of the workspace. So one of the first things that we did is we took the leads of each bench area on a tour of more recently remodeled labs. One was at Confluence and Wenatchee and the other was at Trios. And we were able to let them see some more recent designs and let them influence that and let them pick what they liked, what they didn't like in the new design. And in the next slide, I think Stacy's going to talk about some of the future state. Stacy.
Okay, I was on mute.
So future state of the laboratory. We worked really closely with our staff to identify some of the challenges of our current space. And by being able to go over and see some existing newer laboratories, it really highlighted some of our issues. Lighting, noise, workspace, workflow, humidity requirements, the ability to address expanding equipment, requests for expanding test menus, where do we keep our supplies, how do we keep organized? And also ability to adapt to the equipment that's coming in. So when we looked at the future state of these labs, a lot of them were linear workflows, mobile cabinets, nothing is solid mounted to the ground or to the wall to give you the flexibility to change. Not every day, but as new equipment comes on and change as new test menus grow. So next slide. The key to really giving us this is that modular mobile workstations and casework. Like I said, nothing's mounted to the wall. You can see here that a lot of the tables are on wheels. So you do have the ability to push things back, turn them other ways as the equipment grows. That's really important because the lifespan of equipment for laboratories is about six to eight years. And like Rhonda said, chemistry seems to be getting bigger. So you've got to be able to adjust when you need that new equipment. And that's just something right now, what we have, we don't have room. Next slide. Our other big challenge has been storage. With changing to Cerner, the laboratory took over all its own ordering, all its own receiving functions. And if you walk into the lab today, our supplies, when materials drop some off are either left in a box in the hallway, left in boxes there, are left in boxes in the walkway. So we really wanted something that would allow us to have space to do the receiving, to make sure we could keep what we need by the instruments and have a supply area in the lab. So freeing up some of that counter space. And we really wanted one location to store our supplies at. Next slide. Looking at this expansion, there's also equipment needs. Some new equipment would be a urinalysis machine that does automated microscopy work, allowing us to standardize that testing and improve the turnaround time. It would allow us to bring the cepheid, which we currently have, but we can't install because we don't have electrical, we've exceeded our electrical load. So just bringing on the cepheid alone, it's a molecular test. If we could do 25% of the volume in COVID testing, which would be about 3,000 tests a year, we could save close to $210,000 a year in purchase services by getting this equipment onboard. And the last piece of the expansion is Orchard Software, which would allow us to do bidirectional interfaces with outside non-KVH clinics. So improving not only our bottom line, but also improving the care that they provide to their patients. LabCorp and current reference labs outside the area don't offer rapid turnaround times for stat testing. And it's something that we could do. Can I interrupt briefly? I just wanted to remind the board members that back when we converted to Cerner, we worked really hard to try to maintain our relationship with CHCW and continue to do the work for the clinic here in Ellensburg. But this is the piece that was missing and we simply could not get our interface to adequately support that testing. So we actually lost that to a reference lab at that time. So this is part, and, and it's not necessarily just a revenue issue here. It's a completeness of the record. It would be so helpful, I think, for them and for us to have a fully integrated lab results and ordering system. So that's kind of what we're looking at when we talk about being able to expand to other providers. It's truly a patient care issue and being able to offer them that rapid turnaround time that they can't get because their samples now are either going to Spokane or they're going to Seattle. So it definitely would improve patient care throughout the valley. The other area it would add for us is redundancy. So right now, our backup chemistry analyzer sits in the old FME building. So when our main chemistry instrument goes down, that huge piece of equipment that Rhonda showed, we're running across the parking lot and it's a much smaller test menu. We don't have redundancy in all the chemistry tests we offer. So if there are therapeutic drug results that are needed, if there's a pneumonia that's needed, that's a send out that has to go to Memorial. So you're talking for some of that stat testing, two to three hours before we get that result back when our main instrument is down. And this is a major issue for our emergency department. So by expanding the laboratory, that piece of equipment would be built into this lab. And it would allow us to have not only insight in the lab, but allow us to do close to 100% redundancy in our chemistry menus and our hematology menus. Next slide. So like Rhonda said, we really spent a lot of time getting the staff involved in what works, what doesn't work, and what is your ideal workflow? Ken met with each of our leads, so hematology, blood bank, microbiology, processing and chemistry, and sat down with them and said, okay, let's talk about the equipment in your space, the workflow you see, what are your needs? And this is an example after working with Sandy, our hematology lead. And what they had laid out is that linear workflow that would work the best for hematology. Next slide. So from there, what Ken did is provided us three different floor plans. After getting feedback from not only the leads, but the staff on what do we need and what do we want? So he provided us three different floor plans. All, all of them had some pros and some cons. And the staff provided feedback on which plan they wanted. And this is plan number three. This is what the majority of the staff felt would fit our needs and be able to be flexible enough to get us through the next 10 to 15 years. Once we had finalized, okay, we like option three, the next step was what little tweaks do we need to make? So we've done some adjustment in micro, some additional counter space up in the right-hand corner. That's our microbiology department. This floor plan gives micro a completely closed area, which then allows it to have a negative upon negative airflow. So the whole lab itself is negative and then micro is also its own negative airflow. Some of the reasons the staff picked this is this high-density storage area. It's something that we're completely lacking in right now, but we feel adds efficiency to be able to have access to it and also allows our receiving area to make sure everything gets properly documented in Cerner. They like this back door in, so when you come in from your lunch, bring your food into the break room, you don't have to walk through the processing area and you don't walk through the area. So this was definitely a big infection control process. We've got some extra workspace, so our leads can actually get out of the high noise area, sit down and have some quiet space. And then with the blood bank here, we're close to this sample drop-off window. So people can come and pick up samples, drop off samples, pick up blood without coming into the lab, but yet far enough away to provide that quieter environment you need when working up those complex blood bank issues. And then you look at the main lab here, you've got hematology, processing and chemistry in a linear area with also right below these numbers, chemistry instruments by the hematology sink. You can have a walkthrough, so you don't have to walk that full linear line. And even when you only have one or two techs working, they can actually sit in either this hematology area, number 48, and they can actually see everything that's going on in chemistry, everything that's going on hematology and even the processing window. We also kept in the design two draw stations. There are these rooms right here, so we still will continue to see outpatients. But we wanted to get them out of the noisy laboratory area. So we did create a barrier with a closed door that allows a little more privacy for those outpatients and also keeps all the noise of the general lab out of there. Next slide. I think, Ken, were you going to talk about the different phasing for this?
Sure, absolutely. So one of the challenges of remodeling a lab in an existing functioning facility is kind of resolving how to organize the work to reduce the impact on the lab while it's functioning. And one of the bonuses of this remodel is that it's expanding into an adjacent space. So when we looked at how to break this work up and kind of move parts around, the first thing we did is say, well, if we build into this new space as our first phase, and so up in the upper left-hand corner here, you can see that this area down below is the existing lab. And then this section up above is a new expansion space. So if we build that space first as phase one, we can start to move equipment and processes from the main lab up into that space, one being microbiome, which is up in the upper right corner there, and then some of the hematology and chemistry stuff. Then we can move to phase two where we put in a temporary wall and start building out half of the existing lab. Then, once that's done, we can move to phase three where we build out the rest of the main lab. And once that's done, we can open them up to each other and fill in this little patient toilet room up in the upper corner here. And that's, that's really done so that we can take advantage of an existing door that allows people to get into that upper space while the lower spaces are being built out. So between, between being able to take advantage of that new space to start the process, we're able to juggle the parts and pieces around and move the different equipment around the space and, and break the project up into parts that keep it functioning. I think that's it for that. Next slide. So the timeline for the project is, has been broken up to be 23 weeks for design, six weeks for permitting and DOH review, four weeks for bidding, and then another 24 weeks for construction. Right now, we are in the middle of design development, which is in the middle of the, of the phases. The design phases are broken up into your three typical phases, schematic design, design development and construction documents. So we're right in the middle of design development right now. And that, that's really where we're taking these, this existing plan that was done during pre-design and starting to, to flesh it out, trying to make sure we understand all the different parts and pieces that go into this. Where, you know, where do we need all this electrical? Where do we need special mechanical? Is, is it all modular casework? Is there some stuff that's built in and making sure that we understand those different parts and getting them into the design? And then the next phase is construction documents where we'll actually take all that information and put, put together the set that gets built from. That gets followed up by sending it out to places like DOH to do their review and to the city for their, for their permitting review. Right now, we have six weeks in the schedule for, for those governmental reviews. Right now with COVID, some of those reviews, like the DOH review, is running a little bit longer than, than what we've had in the past. So the six weeks may be a little bit short. But that's something what, you know, hopefully as we get a little bit closer, we'll get a better feel for what, what their schedule's going to be like. So there may be a little bit of flex there. Then the project goes out to bid. We have about four weeks in the schedule for bidding and then, and then we move into construction. And we're assuming construction right now is going to last about 24 weeks, which puts move in for the final move in for the project at about the end of November this next year. Or this year now, I guess.
Stacy, and this may be a question for Ken, too. You answered this already, I think. I just want to make sure I have it nailed down because at one point we had talked about having to move possibly the labs some to another space while the construction was being done. But as I understand what you're saying now, it'll be able to remain there and just sort of shift things around. So I'm, I mean, that's correct, right? As I understand it?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you made that clear. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
I guess I'll, I'll throw another question at you. This may be a question for Stacy as well. So the people there who work there have been involved in the planning process. I know that, I mean, you can't always get everyone on board 100%, but it seems like there's a fairly widespread support among your employees, among the employees who worked there for this remodel.
I would say absolutely. We're struggling with space. We're struggling with workflow. And even something as simple as making sure our shipments get received in because we don't have anywhere to do that work. They don't. And I mean, that impacts us because if you don't receive it in Cerner, the bill doesn't get paid. So they're all looking forward to having a really nice place to work. And just the noise in the laboratory, I know a lot of you have been able to have come through just the noise itself and not being able to find a spot where you can kind of sit down and think is very stressful, very, very stressful for them. So a majority of the staff, like I said, looked at all the plans and said, we really like number three. We think that that is the best workload and hits the items that we're really concerned with.
And then Stacy on the, or maybe Ken can help with this. The, we're moving into the old SOP space that they were using. Is that right? That the space that we're assuming?
It's the pre-op.
Yeah.
Pre-op is currently located.
Yeah, and that's gonna, is that, are they just going to use a smaller space? Where are they moving to?
Plan is to move them to the general surgery area that was just vacated since general surgery moved to Dr. Sands' space.
Yep, okay.
But kind of the long, the long-term vision is that when we look at the multiplex, we'll have our general surgery, orthopedics, vascular services all right there. And then pre-op and wound care will be in what used to be general surgery. So that as people are scheduling surgeries or going in for pre-op, it will all be in that one general multiplex location.
Yeah, the designs seem well thought out, yeah.
Now, Ken, that one slide that had the drawing, Ken sat down with the leads and they had cutouts kind of with some of the equipment and they would move things around and rework the workflow and do some spaghetti mapping and try to figure out, okay, this is what you told me, is this really what, what you do? And we spent a lot of time making sure that we had that right. And then Ken took that and created three different options to look at. And I, I would just say, I was the one that asked Ron and Ken to look at relocating the, the lab. And my big concern there was having a construction project in the core of the hospital when we might be in surge due to COVID. So my question, when I asked them to explore that, was how much time would we save if you could just get the lab and go at it as quickly as you could as opposed to phasing? And it turned out that not only did it not save a lot of time, but it was very expensive as well. So it was, I think, in the neighborhood of $300,000 to make that move. So we went through the exercise and the, the actual construction time is, is not much shorter if we do it, if we were to move things.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks for the tour. This is, this is really great. I like the bird's eye view. This is fascinating to me, so I'm excited to see it come along.
It's helpful that, that we all did the gimba, I think, last year to know how much volume goes through there and how busy they really are. I mean.
And we're so much busier right now with COVID.
Mm-hmm.
And Bob, I haven't gimbied there, so I'd like to do that this next month, just so I can visually see what we're talking about in person.
Oh, yeah.
We would love to have you.
Terrific, thank you.
Andy to set it up.
I'm sorry, John, I thought you, yeah, I thought you, I think it's a great idea.
Since I used to work at the hospital, I've been in the lab a lot, but I think maybe next month I'll try to gimba also there. I'll talk to Stacy and see if we can arrange something so that way I can kind of just review the lab because there has been significant changes. You've got some really awesome new equipment in there that you didn't used to have.
That and like Rhonda said, just the, the volume, as the clinics get busier, we're definitely seeing an increase in volume with that. And then put COVID on top of that. It's amazing. Jason can attest that we're setting records almost every month on how many samples, how many patients we've seen.
Yeah, any other questions? Appreciate the, we, the board appreciates the presentation and the detail of the presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll move into public comment and announcements. If there's anyone there that has a public comment or announcement, we would appreciate sharing with that now and limiting it to three minutes. Is there anyone? Okay, not hearing any response. We'll move on to reports and dashboards. First up is quality with Mandy Olson.
So I'm sorry, it's been a very busy month, I think, as we predicted last board meeting. And so I don't have a written report for you, but there is some actions we'd like the board to take. So I don't know if Matt or Terry wants to talk about the COPI plan that we've brought forward, that process?
Yeah, Terry, have anything to say?
Well, we've, we discussed the COPI plan in, in, you know, in the quality meeting. And we went over different items and I think that I would like to suggest that we approve the COPI plan the way it is written because it's been done a really good job. Departments have added a few new items to it, which will actually do a really good job. And they've also kind of redone some of the items that we're having a little issue with. So I think this is a really solid COPI plan. What about you, think, Matt? And they've also kind of redone some of the items that we're having a little issue with. So I think this is a really solid Quapi plan. What about you think, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, we went through the process last time. The different departments put together plans and these are reviewed. Then by quality and also in the QI council. The draft went to the board last month, so board had a chance to review it. And to provide a feedback. So this is a long process, very involved process with a lot of people involved. I think they put together really good documents. And so like Terry, I think, I think, I mean, I'm supportive, as is the whole QI council. But of course, the board, if the board, any other board members have have any suggestions or inputs or or any questions about it, we'd be happy to answer them. Any questions from any of the other board members? None for me. I just think it's great how how much information is there and how, you know, just you can tell so much work's been gone. And this happened a couple of years ago, I think. Julie, you might be able to specify, but tying it right in with the strategic plan. Yeah. I think very positive move. And it it really shows that people are taking action on the strategic plan that we all put together. So I really appreciate that as a board member.
Well, and then to take it a step further, the same Quap, the same initiatives make it into the department's goals and into the director's evaluations and their goals and objectives for the upcoming year. But I just wanted to say, I know that the board got a full presentation about a lot of what was accomplished this year. But this would have been a great year for most places to say, you know what? Just roll it, roll 2020 into 2021. But when Mandy started going through this process, in addition to managing a pandemic, an amazing amount of work had been accomplished out of the 2020 Quapi. So there was very little role forward. There are new initiatives. People accomplished a lot out of the current year's Quapi. So.
The strategic plan just at the forefront. I mean, I I think that was genius. Who never came up with that?
It's your CEO, Julie Peterson's pretty smart cookie.
Mandy, she was giving you a chance to take credit.
I can't go. It was her idea and it was a great one.
And I like being a cookie.
Yeah, all right. So so, yeah, so assuming that all the board members are happy with this, then and Bob, I think, well, I guess I'd make a motion that we approve the Quapi. Matt has a motion to approve a second.
I second it.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Yeah, thank you. Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. It's very impressive.
Yeah. Just before we go into the into the dashboard and things. And I won't ask you to go into a lot of detail because I know that Julie's going to go into the specifics of the vaccination. But what's, could you just tell the board what the what the what KVH's policy is on the COVID vaccine with employees? I know with the flu vaccine, we don't, we don't require it. We say that if you opt out, you have to wear a mask for the whole flu season. What's our, do we have an official policy on the COVID vaccine?
No, our policy is that we offer it. So it's it's not even written in policy, but that is our stance right now. CDC and no one has changed guidance about PPE, whether you get the vaccine or not. So it's it's optional, it's encouraged, but that's it at this point.
Okay, so.
Very high uptick, though. I think Julie has some information about that, though, too.
Okay. Do we need, I mean, we have a flu vaccine policy. Do we need to have any policy around the COVID vaccine?
Personally, I would not recommend that at this point, especially because the availability might be a challenge. We don't know what the it might be like. So telling people that they have to get it when we're not necessarily having clear information about what to expect as far as volumes to me doesn't doesn't seem fair to put that on the employee.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily, I mean, it was, it's really just sort of an information gathering thing. I wasn't suggesting that we would necessarily want to to require it. But I was sort of, if we did something comparable with the flu vaccine, I was thinking, what would we have a mask for the rest of their lives? Or how does that work?
Yeah, they're already masking. And so it's interestingly enough, I, you know, we did have a higher declination rate with flu vaccine we've seen. And I have not, I don't feel like the response is the same with the COVID vaccine. I it seems like there is more excitement than I've ever seen for a vaccine amongst healthcare providers. And it is really interesting what the uptake is, like I said. So that's my take on it a little bit.
Okay. One of the reasons I'm asking too is that we're having a discussion. And really, it's it's not a public discussion yet, but a discussion about how we should handle it central with the faculty and students. And there's a conversation about whether faculty should be required to get it and things like that. And and I was just sort of curious if we had, but it sounds like we haven't developed one. Right now, we're okay just encouraging people to to get it.
I don't think we're there yet at at any sort of requirement at this point.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Um, before we go on to the dashboard, though, the other thing that is in your board packet is a proposed 2021 QI dashboard. The the measures that we're proposing be in next year's dashboard are highlighted in green. One thing that occurred to me since the last QI council in this board meeting, though, was would you like, in addition to that, maybe some supplemental COVID data on a monthly basis? So it seems like I'm bringing some regularly. And I think there'll be questions or opportunities to share that in the future. So that might be one thing to consider is to ask for on a routine basis.
What's, when you, when you talk about data, are you talking about data? You're not talking about community data. What are you talking about specifically?
Well, I'll show you. So here was what I I planned to share with the board tonight, too. Let's see, share my screen. So just some of our numbers I've been I've been bringing forward as part of my board packet, but it could just be a standard thing that I bring. So employee health over the month. You can really see in December, this is testing and numbers of employees who tested positive. And then those who are excluded from work either because they were tested positive or they were exposed to a positive person. So I showed you this data back in November and we said, gosh, November's feeling pretty crazy. And we're worried about December. And and you can see that here, we did have. And these are probably low, actually. They're probably not. It's it's, we don't see every single employee that gets tested. About about 99 were tested in December, 82 of them were negative. We did have 17 positive. Forty staff were excluded over the course of the month at one time or another because they were either positive themselves or, like I said, had a close contact exposure. And then the other, so as well as looking at kind of for every positive test that comes back, we look at at that chart and determine what employees had contact with that patient and make sure we notify them that they had a a low-risk exposure. Or if they had a higher risk, we are notifying them too. But that has been very rare. And so these are the number of reviews that employee health has done. And it just went crazy in December because of the positives in our community. So this is one type of data. The other piece would be potentially COVID vaccination rates of our employees. The amount of testing that's being done from KVH. I, we, there's information shared with leaders on a cadence. And I just wondered if that might be part of the information you'd find helpful on a monthly basis. Along with the quality data.
Yeah, I'd I'd find that very helpful.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's not.
Sorry, what did you say?
I said, it's not hard for us to share. We're in the practice of sharing it at incident command routinely and amongst the leadership team and with staff. And so, you know, it's on the internet page. It'd just be sharing it with you. And I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, it would be helpful. So yeah, that would be great to have. Thank you.
So are there any other concerns, though? I mean, this dashboard that comes to the board really is the board's metrics of what they need to see to understand at a high level what's happening quality-wise across the organization. So what is in green is what the leadership has recommended. QI council is recommending, understanding that this is really at the level of quality oversight for the board. There are hundreds of things that different staff and leaders are measuring within KVH every day for the ongoing operations and safety of the care they provide. But not all of those individual data points need to come to the board every month. So this is what has been recommended by QI council that you do see every month to help you under, you know, keep an eye on the the quality.
And I remember having this conversation in QI council. We basically got input from from some of the, you know, the people who worked, including Dr. O'Brien and Dr. Martin, and, you know, talking about what information they thought would be useful for us to have. I mean, we can add anything. They measure all sorts of stuff. And we can always get that information. They'll be happy to provide it to us whenever we want. But it's just a question of what we want on the dashboard. Terry, you have anything to add about this?
No, I I think the dashboard is is pretty good. I I do like seeing this COVID information be this because it kind of gives us an impact of what's going on in the hospital. And, you know, in the community, you know, we'll get questions once in a while. So that way we'll be able to respond back. But I I think that we have a pretty solid dashboard right now. And if there is something that does pop up like we had last year or a couple of times, Mandy would be able to give us a special little overview of it. Because I I'd like to kind of try to help keep the meeting down to a nice smooth moving. And, you know, maybe even in the future, we might decide that well, you know, once a quarter, some of this information should be shared as opposed to every meeting. And that way allow us to have a little more efficient meetings. You know, because we can look this view it. And then if we need to have a big chat about it, we can do those on a quarterly basis. So I I think that's something maybe the rest of the board might want to think about if we would like to reduce some of these things down, or if there is some thing that Mandy thinks that maybe would be better on a quarterly basis as opposed to on a monthly basis.
Well, currently, patient satisfaction is one of those measures. So it's kind of a, we don't, we don't bring that every month, and especially with some of the delays in them getting those results. So we do bring patient satisfaction data quarterly.
The the one that I always have to, I always have to look it up every month is the harm occurrences. Right? So, you know, there were pretty low and we've had a few months where it's gone a little bit high. But you know, it says category D error is an error that reaches a patient requires monitoring to confirm that it did not result in harm. It's kind of hard to like, is that good data to have is that it just doesn't tell me a whole lot other than it's something that was reported.
There, they're the things we want less of. So category D or higher meaning means the error reached the patient. So the goal would be to have zero of those and still have incident reporting, meaning everything that we're catching is not reaching the patient. So that's why that's there.
Last month, we had six events that reached the patient.
Exactly. And so the the hard part, and maybe this is a good discussion, is the category D itself is where there's, there's really no change in outcome for the patient, right? It reached the patient, but there isn't any long-term harm. There just, there has to be, something has to be done with the patient to prevent long-term harm. And so maybe there's another category we want to put there also, or or kind of tease it out just a little bit further. When there are small numbers like this, we do have to be careful. Especially talking about the specific instances because it could be that they're so specific that it could be identifiable. So that's, that's the problem with some of this in a public meeting and having getting getting numbers too small.
Right.
And and that's part of what we do at QI council is we have the ability to talk about that in greater detail there. I, it might be helpful if we had sort of a target there with. But there isn't a target that I know of besides zero out there in the world.
This is an acceptable number, seven.
Right.
No, it's like zero is the number. Yeah. All right. Yeah. Any other comments from the board?
Nope.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay, I will be bringing that the new dashboard forward starting in January. So it'll be a few board meetings yet as we catch up with the the data for the end of the year. And then I didn't have any other comments about the dashboard for this month.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
CEO.
Yeah. So so you are probably wondering, who's this Tricia person that's on the line? Tricia Sinek is the, and I'm going to ask Michelle to correct this. Our strategic business coordinator, is that correct?
Projects coordinator, strategic projects coordinator.
So, so Tricia is, what we did when Lisa Potter left was we we looked at reorganizing that position. And we were at that time talking about whether the organization needed a project manager. We were, as as you know, every Monday, Carrie opens a new clinic. And it's a scramble to keep facilities aligned with operations, with physician recruiting, with IT. So we particularly found, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, at the end of the year, we learned a lot of lessons in neurology with Dr. Gustafson. We kind of crashed into each other in that one. So we were talking about the need for project manager. So we have combined those, the the business development work that Lisa Potter was doing. And the project management, and we thought we'll go out and we'll see if we can find that unicorn out there. And it just so happens that that is exactly what Tricia does. So if Tricia and Tricia, by the way, we did move this responsibility from medical staff support, which was Dr. Martin's area to Michelle, so that it can also be incorporated into marketing and the rollout and the promotion of new services. So Tricia, you want to tell the board a little bit about yourself?
Eric, thank you so much for that introduction. And my apologies, my camera is not working, so you can't see me. Today was my first day at KVH and I'm very happy to be here. And I'm very excited about all the opportunities. I come to KVH with about 35 years experience in healthcare and a lot of that doing program development work in communities and in healthcare systems. I spent 23 years at Franciscan in Tacoma and then a year at Providence in their program services department. And primarily, my background is in oncology, but I'm pretty well-versed in much of healthcare. And then I've been at Virginia Mason Memorial for three years as the oncology service line leader. So I'm very happy to be at KVH and I'm excited about the opportunities with the community and with the organization to move forward in organized fashion with strategic planning and program development. So thank you for having me. And I welcome any input from anyone who may have it for me. Thank you.
Welcome. Well, yeah. Good to have you.
Yeah, welcome.
Well, so you will find Tricia right across in the administrative area, right across the hall from Scott Olander in an office, but it looks like Michelle furnished from a garage sale. So we are are working on getting her a proper office. But so it's a work in progress, but but looking forward to having this skill back. So I wanted, before I talked about the vaccine program, I did want to talk a little bit about COVID testing. It has quieted down a little bit since the beginning of the year and Carrie and Rhonda jump in about Upper County anytime you want to. So it's a little bit quieter than it was. It kind of reached a crescendo, I think, right before Christmas time. But one of the things we are doing, and you saw the spike that Mandy showed you in the case contact investigations that she's doing internally or her. Mandy showed you in the case contact investigations, that she's doing internally, or her staff's doing internally, that is, of course, scalable out to the entire community. So a ton of this going on in the community. One of the things that we thought was working really well in Kiddatass County was that our public health department was reaching out to people who were positives, and not only notifying them that they were positive, but also subsequent days they were calling just to check in. And a lot of what we're seeing in terms of volumes of COVID in the hospital is folks who either, they deteriorate, and they panic, or their caregivers panic, or there's just an exhaustion level. They don't know where to go with their questions. They don't know if this symptom is to be expected, sort of thing. So they end up in the emergency department. And they're relatively long length of stay in the emergency department, and it's, and it's exhausting work for our staff there to do on top of everyone else they're seeing in the ED. So we, we think that phone call, talking to caregiver, talking to the patient, just checking in every day so that they know that there's somebody out there to call, they know to get ahold of their primary care provider. We think that was a very, very effective tool. Well, because of the caseload, public health is not able to do that anymore. So Carrie is working with Laura Babowski from the foundation to replicate for our primary care patients. So when you've come up positive within our system, and we identify that you have a primary care provider in the KVH system, we're putting together a group of volunteers who will be able to make that same sort of phone call. So Laura reached out to her foundation board. Rhonda Holden is on the board of Hospice Friends. As volunteers, they've been sidelined as well, and they're anxious to find an opportunity to contribute. So Laura reached out to that board, and then our, our general volunteers as well. In the middle of this, Dr. Solberg, who retired a couple of years ago, is on the foundation board. He's also on Incident Command backing up Kevin Martin. And right out of the gate, he indicated that he was very interested in participating in this as well. So Laura's working with all those volunteers. We got the script from the Department of Health. Carrie's working with her, and I keep telling them this is not a clinical call. You're not a nurse triage person. Think, think prayer chain. So this is you giving comfort. This is you being a friend and a voice and, and helping people discuss, you know, figure out what resources they're out there if they need them. So we hope, I think there's going to be some Zoom training for the volunteers that Mandy Weed is helping to organize, and then we hope to be rolling that out so we can resume those regular calls to at least the KVH patients. And again, I've told everybody, as far as I'm concerned, this is a self-serving and selfish endeavor. I do think it has been a tremendous benefit to the hospital, keeping the activity in the emergency department down. So Carrie, anything to add?
That was a great summary. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So that's that. I did want to spend some time talking about the vaccine rollout here. And again, just about everybody on the screen has been involved with this, so feel free to jump in whenever. In Kiddatass County, we have received, well, we have received nine hundred and seventy-five Pfizer vaccines. We actually received our boosters this week. But in terms of initial doses, we received nine hundred and seventy-five Pfeizers and our internal medicine clinic and workplace health sort of randomly were visited by the vaccine ferry and received a hundred doses of the Moderna each. So we went over, and when we, the clinics received those, we brought those into the hospital inventory, and we took custody of those. So in total, we have received one thousand one hundred and seventy-five doses of COVID vaccine. Public Health has requested that we transfer one hundred and forty doses of that to Public Health so that they could expedite the vaccination of folks in our long-term care and nursing homes in the community. So we had pharmacists at the local retail places who were ready to go and ready to start that effort. But they didn't have any vaccine. So we accommodated that, and we have sent a hundred and forty doses through the process to Public Health, and they have delivered those. Our effort in Kiddatass County is different, I think, than just about every other, every other county in the state. Incident Command identified a branch that was to manage vaccines, and that was co-led by Rich Elliott from KBFR and Anna Scarlett from KVH. So weeks before we received any vaccine at all, those two, and, and with very little support outside of those two, identified who the one A's in our community were, not just at KVH, but they reached out and they found everyone they could in the community, from the dentist's office, primary care offices, chiropractors, physical therapists. They went out and they, they captured those people, and they captured those numbers. So so they had a communication plan for all of the one A's in the community before we had even received our first shipment of Pfizer. So I think we received Pfizer on Thursday morning. Carrie Barr and the Process Improvement folks went into action and designed a vaccine clinic workflow and positions. And on Friday, I think we had our soft rollout. Is that right? So does that feel about right, Mandy or Carrie?
It's just, it's, time is just, like, warped, so.
It's right. I'm keeping it to myself. You're right on all of that.
Okay, so if I'm lying, nobody's gonna know. So that, so Friday, we started.
You are one hundred percent right.
Okay. So Friday, we started putting vaccines in arms and made a few tweaks to the process. But the, between that Friday and the Fourth of January, we delivered, as I said, we received nine hundred and seventy-five Pfizer doses. We put one thousand sixty-four Pfizer doses in people's arms. So we have delivered. The state of Washington thinks they're right about that the record right now is like sixteen to eighteen percent. They think that's because recording is behind. But the state thinks they might be about twenty-six percent of delivered vaccines actually being administered. Kiddatass County is at about a hundred and two percent. So we are proud not only of the, what we've accomplished in terms of delivering that first dose to our one A community, but also about the way that we have done it collaboratively, the way we have done everything in this county. So, so we are poised now. Tomorrow, on the eighth, we begin giving that booster. Carrie and her team and, and Carissa Bacon have gone through and again, tweaked the processes to make sure that the booster clinic is going to go as well as the initial dose clinic is going. And we will get that second dose in people's arms by January twenty-fifth. So that's the situation as far as Pfizer is concerned. In the meantime, the governors come out with some definitions for one B. We know there are some one A's that were on vacation or that we missed. So the way this is, the, the limiting factor right now is vaccine. We have these sporadic deliveries of Moderna. We don't know if we're going to get more big shipments of the Pfizer. We're ready to handle that second booster. But we have about three different plans poised to execute, depending on how the next batches of vaccine come to this county. So we began the process this week, again, on a collaborative basis of saying, we are going to have to stand up a county-wide, high-volume vaccine service. And we see that this service is going to probably need to be in place at least through the end of May. So we have, you know, forty-five thousand people to get through this process. And of course, not all of them are going to, to take the vaccine, but it's a, it's a huge job. So we don't want these people trying to make appointments in their primary care clinics. We don't want them crashing around in our waiting rooms. CHCW absolutely agrees with that. Public Health is at the table with us. We've got Anna and Rich Elliott driving this process. So there's the entire community is kind of sitting around the table saying, Anna and Rich, how do we make you successful at this? So it won't be a CHCW initiative, or a KVH initiative, or Public Health. We think we're looking at standing this up at the Tiana Way Room, is that right? So parking, of course, is going to be a big deal. But we intend to treat this as a community-wide exercise. We know that what it takes to staff a clinic for four hours and put a hundred people through. I think the maximum we did was about a hundred and fifteen people. So if we replicate that three times and do it twelve hours a day, it's a matter of doing the math and having the vaccine to do it. So we're looking at hiring a coordinator to support Rich and Anna in this effort, someone who would, with the different agencies, whether it's KBFR or Medic One, KVH, people who are contributing volunteers, somebody to schedule the volunteers, somebody to assist with scheduling the patients, and somebody to make sure that the logistics are kind of clicking along. So so that's the planning that's going on right now. CHCW has not run a vaccine clinic yet, so I think they're going to do a soft opening. Our process folks are going to go and they'll map those workflows and map those jobs out of Tiana Way, and I think they're going to do maybe forty, fifty doses. Is that the idea next Tuesday? So.
As of right now, that's the plan.
Okay. So again, I'm, I just could not be more proud of the way Kiddatass County has approached this, and just the quality of the people that are leading this initiative. We were dialing for shoulders. And, you know, of course, there's this, once you dilute a vial of the Pfizer particularly, you're on the clock, and we were absolutely committed to not wasting a single dose. So we had people on standby lists who came in at a moment's notice to get their, their dose. And then through the organization that Carrie and, and Mandy's folks helped design, people walked out with an appointment card for their next dose, and they were ready to go, and tomorrow, they're going to start showing up. So again, the state's at about twenty-six percent, maybe, and Kiddatass County is right now at a hundred and two percent of doses delivered actually administered. So pretty pleased with that. The caveat to that is our clinics, and Carrie can attest to this, the phones are starting to ring. People want to know when they're going to get their dose. So people want to know when Grandma can come in and, and get her vaccine, and they're going to be leaving town, so they, they need to get their vaccine now. They can't wait for it, kind of thing. We're going to have a process. We're going to have to have a, a program. The priorities are not going to go away, so that one A category continues to be a priority. And so when we get our next Pfizer nine seventy-five for initial dose, we have to go back to the one A's and offer it to the one A's first again. So anyone who was gone, anyone who has declined, we need to keep those folks at the top of the priority list. As we add the one Bs or the next groups that come along, again, we need to maintain the prioritization as we schedule people or make it available if there still continues to be a shortage of the vaccine. So it's going to get more complicated. People are going to get impatient. And there's, there's nothing we can do about that. So we're going to do our best, and our best is going to be really, really, really good if what we've done so far is any indication of that. So the big news, I think, when the governor rolled out the one B, there's it, it didn't provide a lot of clarity. I think what they did do is take our one Bs and make them B ones. And no one can figure out why they did that, but we suddenly went from one B to B one, and, and so we're trying to figure out if there's something significant about that. Right now, that's pretty much irrelevant. We've still got one A's to deal with, and we don't have the vaccine to start maths, vaccinating the public anyway. So that's kind of where we're at with vaccines. Any questions or?
I have a comment. I had the opportunity to attend one of the vaccine clinics. And I would like to commend all the team members who thoughtfully designed the workflow. I was astounded with how smoothly everything went, and that was a common theme. I kept hearing people say, as they, as vaccinated individuals or people to be vaccinated were coming through the process about how smooth everything was, and I saw it on social media, people saying, I got my vaccine, and it was the easiest process ever. So I think that the team should be very proud of itself, and especially that we buoyed up the state average by our one hundred two percent. So way to go.
And heaven help anybody who tried to take the white arrows in and the blue arrows out. Let me just say that. So we, we pretty much escorted everyone every step of the way. So Mandy mentioned that we do have some results in terms of the percentage of folks, the one A's that we think we've reached. Of our five hundred and forty-two full and part-time folks here at KVH, we have vaccinated three hundred and eighteen of them. So we are at about sixty percent for those folks. And again, we reached out and reached out. I think everyone knew it was available. If you'll recall, Amanda Scott did a survey of our employees before the vaccine was available. About sixty percent said they wanted to get it. About forty percent said that they were going to wait a while before they actually volunteered to take the vaccine, and that is exactly what we're seeing playing out in our own numbers. So sixty percent accepted the offer, forty percent didn't, I anticipate. Again, those one A's are going to stay our priority. We're probably going to see more of our people come through. And we don't know if there's a Moderna versus Pfizer preference out there among people either.
And Julie, they haven't released any numbers of, as far as one B vaccines coming our way.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
So CHCW received a little bit of Moderna. Like I said, we got these random hundred-dose packages delivered to two of our clinics. I believe that's everything that's been, been received in the county. And there's, there's not even sort of some moving algorithm that you can follow to figure out who's going to get what when. It, Anna has a secret backdoor into emails that she tries to anticipate, tries to follow. But for workplace health, not primary care, but workplace health, to be one of the clinics at KVH to get Moderna was a surprise. So.
Yeah, and not communicated. It was like, it's very strange how, how that is happening. And, and I am, we don't know why our family medicine clinics were left out, but I am got vaccine. So we've requested more, though.
And one of the partners I did leave out, as we're looking at how we're going to vaccinate the community, is CW is at the table as well. So CW is coming up with plans to vaccinate their students, but we see staff and faculty at this point as part of the community. So. And, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I wanted to back up what Erica said. I have talked to many people that have gone through the clinic, and it was a well-oiled machine. It was great. They, you know, these are providers that came to the KVH that don't spend a lot of time at KVH. And they were just amazed how they went in, got the vaccine, and went out. And it was just a smooth thing. There wasn't any, any type of gridlock anywhere where there was. It was really, it was really, really a good thing. So I really know that if we have another issue moving forward, we've got a set of team out there that are going to have another wonderful process to do that. You said something about the, the Tiana Way Room being where the administration is going to be. What place is that?
It's out at the Fairgrounds. And one of the reasons I think they, they went and looked at the Family Healthcare Ellensburg Building. They looked at the Fire Station Twenty-One out on Vantage Highway. But in a, again, parking is a, is a big issue. And then they could size the Tiana Way Room, so it can be expanded and, and contracted depending on the population that we're serving. One of the challenges we're going to have, and, and this is very, very real, the first, the next group, collectively, that we're going to be challenged to vaccinate are, are seniors. There are mobility issues. There's, you know, we are not anticipating that we're going to be able to herd a hundred seventy-plus-year-olds through a vaccination process at the same speed with what, which we're doing our own workforce. So they've got all that in front of them. So.
Can I ask, how many team members does it take?
So when we, when we bring 100-plus people through a four-hour vaccine clinic, how many team members are required to make that happen?
Carrie, I'm going to say we got it down to about 16. Is that right?
We started with our initial planning. We had started with 12. Once we actually conducted the clinic, went through our soft rollout, we amped that up to 21. And then for our second dose, when we evaluated that, we combined and collapsed some of the positions. So we're down to 15.
Thank you.
Sometime in the future, we're going to be able to hug people and when we can, hug pharmacists. Because it turns out they are some of the smartest, most organized people on the planet. So. That's it. Unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Julie. And then any questions on human resources, staff development, that's after Julie's report? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Chief of Staff, Dr. O'Brien.
I guess I muted. I presume you can hear me. Yeah, we have a small group this month, just five. We have two initial appointments, one-year provisional appointments for two ONRAD teleradiologists, Ratah Krishnan and Reisenauer. And then we have a reappointment for Dr. Suzanne Cleveland Zemudio. We discussed and recommend that we extend her appointment for one more provisional year. And Matthew Kastner, ophthalmist, and Jonathan Meyer, ONRAD teleradiologist. Those are both up for reappointments. There are no issues other than the questions you might have about Dr. Zemudio. And that was just a recommendation from the emergency room provider on the MEC to improve our communications with her.
Tim, can I jump in here? Commissioner Ward had pointed out that one of our radiologists' board certification was good through 2062. We thought that that probably was a transposition and should be 2026. But in fact, it is 2022. So that number was correct.
If, yeah, if you could tell me which one it was, I will have that double-checked and corrected.
I think Shannon already went through it. Was it, it was Jonathan Meyer, I think. So.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, Shannon confirmed it for us. So.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Can we get a recommendation? Oh, go ahead, Dr. Brian.
Yeah, we're recommending that the board approve these as presented to you.
I would move to approve.
Second. Erica's second. By Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed? Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
I have just one more comment I wanted to make, and that is when you see that the 1As working for KVH, that's 60%, there's a lot of attitude out there of healthy 1A people to delay getting their vaccinations so that others more in need can get them first.
You're right. You're absolutely correct. We did hear a lot of that.
Yes, I would not be upset about the fact that it's just 60%. I think that's an altruistic result. But that for me.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Martin, PMO, report.
Dr. Martin is not available. He's been on vacation for the last two weeks and I've drug him in three times now. So he was going to try to make it to this meeting, but wasn't sure that he was going to be able to, and he's on the pass, I think, right now.
Okay, yeah. So let's move on to CFO report. Scott?
Very good. Thank you. I would like to, the financial narrative started on page 45 and goes through 45 through 47. But I'd like to start on page 49, which was the statistical portion of the, the report. And and just although we had mixed statistics, we were below budget on admissions, but at budget on patient days, we had, we exceeded budget on inpatient outpatient surgeries, but we're below budget with GI procedures and ER visits and urgent care visits. Lab was, blew through the budget, their budget, 35% positive variance. And they are a good reason for the overall revenue positive variance of a good chunk of the variance. And then, you know, radiology exams was positive. So it was mixed with, from a statistical point of view. But overall, the overall financials resulted in a, a, a pretty positive month where we exceeded our, our budget projections. And I'm going to back up just a little bit to, let's see. I'm going to go down to the financial report on page 51. And you can see the, the, the positive variances that we had in inpatient outpatient revenue and professional, professional services. The corresponding positive variance with, with deductions, although deductions, it would be, they tracked with the, the revenue. And then negative other operating variance. And it was just a timing issue related to some 340B receipts. And then also, as, as was noted in the report, we did not have not, did not recognize any CARES dollars, which goes through that other operating revenue line. And wanted to focus on expenses. And although, although the departmental managers did a pretty good job with expenses, accounting took the liberty of blowing through some of their budgets. And, and it was intentional. We, the, the supply variance of 500 and almost $57,000, $364,000 of that variance was a, an inventory adjustment that we made to, related to inventories throughout the hospital that we really don't treat as inventory. So we're making a one-time expense adjustment to, to push these expenses through. And then, and the other part of that variance with supplies related to lab supplies that were purchased to correspond with the, the high lab volume. And with the purchased services, negative variance, a good piece of that variance also relates to, to purchase services for a lab COVID test that we are sending out. So we, we had an overall negative expense variances of 1.1, over $1,052,000. And, and the result, overall result was a, an, an operating loss of $38,000. It, it was better than we had expected. Typically, November revenue is, is soft. But that was not the case this month. So we actually had budgeted to lose $227,000. But we had, we ended up with a positive variance of $188,000. Year-to-date, we're at $2.9 million and with a positive variance of 1.2. And and then I'm going to bounce back up to our financial dashboard presentation. And there are some, continue to be some positives results with this. Our days and accounts receivable, even though we had a, a positive revenue variance of $1.9 million, which sometimes causes your days on, on days AR to go up. We actually brought the AR down a little bit and the calculation resulted in a reduction of three days from 81 days to 78 days. And just the overall trend year over year, you know, we were at 88 a year ago and down to 78. So we've, we've dropped the days in, in the way that I prefer to do it by bringing in cash. We had a very, very good cash month, again, over $8 million. And you see the cash, that's reflected in the, the cash and, oops. You still, okay. I'm sorry. It's reflected in the, that cash line, that purplish cash line. You know, when we got the CARES money back in April and May, that was the reason for the increase in cash then. But the continued growth in days cash on hand from July, June, July, August, September, October, now November, has, has been to, to efforts by the rev cycle team to bring in cash and it continues to, they continue to do an excellent job. So we actually increased cash on hand by about $400,000. And then the, the commercial, the, some of the, some of the reasons for the cash is the changes that we made to consolidate pediatrics and women's health under the MAC Rural Health Clinic umbrella. And, and then also some of the improvements with our payer mix with growth in the commercial payer mix.
You're going to have to expand the chart to fit it in there to get any higher.
Well, we, Julie was concerned about days cash on hand, so she went and bought a clinic last year.
Every time he does that, I go buy a building. You know how that works. So.
But so any questions about November results? All in all, good.
I was going to comment just back up on that supply line. Just retouch that, that 300 and something thousand dollar inventory adjustment. That's mostly just kind of a change. Most of that's due to a change in how we account for the inventory in some tertiary supply locations. The actual account and inventory adjustment in our store room was only about 1,200 bucks.
Thank you for pointing that out because Morgan Anderson takes that, her inventory, very seriously. And she was frustrated that it was even $1,200. So.
Yeah, so that's $1,200 on, on $9.7 million of supplies. She, she does very good.
Yep. Thank you. Other questions about November? Okay. I would like to drop down to and talk about the, the capital requests. And I'm going to drop down to slide 62, on page 62 and 63. The, the, John Ward, do you want to comment about this or do you want me to talk, talk, talk about it?
I'll let you take this one.
Okay. The, the, the first capital request is for, to expand the, the area behind our front desk in the hospital. There's essentially a vacant, vacant, large vacant office that is used for currently for storing mammography film and just other excess equipment. It's not well-utilized space currently. And what we intend, want to do is to renovate the space and refresh in it and create a, expand the doorway into the space so that it's ADA compliant and people can get in with a wheelchair. And that we would provide financial counseling when, available at the hospital for when they, they hear, people tend to, when they have questions about their bills or, or wanting to get, obtain medical records, they often come to the hospital. They don't, they don't often go up to Radio Hill where there are, most of our financial counselors are currently located. So this is a, an effort to make this more patient, more convenient for our patients. And to, in, when they have questions related to their bill or would like to pay their, their bill. And that we had budgeted for this at a couple hundred thousand dollars. And the, the cost of the work that we're going to do is, came in at $121,000. And.
And, and Scott, it's correct that this sort of work will not disrupt the front desk at all. It kind of happens behind the, the wall behind them. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Minimal disruption.
Yeah. And so we discussed this in Tuesday's financial meeting and we certainly felt, once we went through the discussion, that it was a, a very useful investment of funds. So therefore I would move to approve this capital expense.
I'll second. Wait, I, I shouldn't. I'll pass that on to someone else.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion by John, second by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The, the second capital request is for some additional storage for our IT department. And there, John had some additional questions related to this. And so they kind of gave it a conditional recommendation. But Jeff Yamada is, is available to, to talk in more detail. He's to answer some questions I could, I could not answer. So Jeff, if you're available, would.
Sure. Um, so really this is, and really this is a technology refresh. I do have a, like a real quick presentation if you want me to do that.
If you can, I can, I can stop sharing.
Yeah. All right. So I just threw something, let's see, together, just to kind of go through this. So really, current state, our storage, so all of our backup technology is kind of at its end of life. Normally, this, this technology usually lasts about, within the five to six-year range. If you get older than that, you start to look at, you know, breakdowns in the equipment as well as the software. Your support in the software kind of goes out. They don't update or upgrade the software as you get on in years. They have moved on to newer technology. So what we did, or what I did come in was really just evaluate where we were with our storage. And we did not add anything. Normally, you continue to add storage for one or two, every one or two years, depending on, you know, the amount of extra capacity you might need. But we did not do that. We were more in the organization phase. And so currently, our storage capacity is at about 86.5% full. If you get to about 90, you start to get critical. So we are very close right now. We did not want to add additional storage to old technology. And so we were holding out and really just organizing the, our storage capacity and our organization of files. There are some new things that we want to put into place moving forward. A lot of our storage is really around images. So imaging, you know, if you look at CT scans, 3D memo, all of that takes a ton of storage that we need to back up on a daily basis or on a scheduled basis. We do have some old files and stored emails that are still existing. And so we continue to clean those up. A lot of this, you know, really, if you break it down. A lot of this, you know, really, if you break it down to simple forms, you have a storage. Unit and, you know, are you just throwing the boxes in there or are you, you know, really organizing your storage unit? To be efficient. And so over the last year, that's really what we've tried to do. We have more things coming as we start to add the new technology around email retention, file retention. How long are we keeping these things? I know we have some emails that are very old and we'll probably put some policies in place over the next year to continue to utilize the amount of storage we have. And the guys, I have two system admins that really are the primary keepers of storage and and patches for our software. They currently are struggling pretty much on a daily basis. Especially if we have a long weekend coming up to make sure that we have enough storage space. So when the backups do go over the weekend or in the middle of the night, that they are not interrupted. Due to the storage needs. So if, as we all know, in this day and age, cybersecurity is number one. Cyber attacks is just rampant right now, especially, you know, around COVID. I think early on, there was some truths around COVID happening and the cyber criminals. Backing off on some of the attacks, but fairly recently, recently here, that just exponentially just blew up again. And so I see, you know, from probably on a weekly basis, multiple healthcare systems getting hit by ransomware or malware. And some, you know, as you know, locally here as well. And so really, if you ever get compromised by ransomware, you only have two options, right? So you either pay the ransom or you try to recover from what you have as far as backups. And so backup becomes very important in that process. And so not only the backups, but how long will it take for you to back up, you know, completely? To get your business up and running. So I just saw an article just this week of a hospital that was compromised. And I think they were still down and every day that they were down, it was probably about a one point five million dollar loss in revenue. As they're trying to get their systems back up and running, so so very important. Some of the new technology that we're looking at will help to speed up our backup. It'll give us additional capacity and really get into some of the best practices of the new technology moving forward. So things that, you know, we want to implement here as well. Currently, some of our backups, especially around imaging, imaging takes four to five days running in the background to completely back up. Some of these things that we do are what we call throttled. And so the process processing power is slower, so it does not affect our current systems. So it takes longer to back up, but those continue to back up in the background as well. And then, you know, this would fully support solutions in our growth moving forward. So this would probably last us probably another, you know, five to six years, maybe longer. And what you would then see is about every two years, you'd see additional funds or capital requests for just additional storage space that we would need, but the technology would be up to date. And so that's kind of what you'd see in the normal cycle of storage and storage needs moving forward. So, you know, kind of the future state that we're looking at is really around updating the technology to current standards, new things in place. And this is really not cutting edge. This is the current best practice. And so there's a difference in that in the pricing. And so if we were wanting to be cutting edge, you know, we're probably talking double the amount that we're requesting for. But really just wanting to get to the current standards of backup recovery, you know, and disaster recovery. So or what we're trying to shoot for here. We're also looking for other new technology that has come up. With the, you know, advance of all of the ransomware going on, the criminals also have gotten a lot smarter. And so they know one of the recoveries options is for you to, you know, restore from backup. Well, now, because they know that they're starting to encrypt and block even your backups. And so there's a new technology called air gapping where you actually do backups. Those are copies of your backup and you kind of offload it offsite. So they're not connected to your network. If you were to get compromised by ransomware, that does not affect that offsite copy of your information. And so I'm trying to implement that in here as well. I know that's something that the city is really wanting to do right now as well, so. And so there's two pieces to this. One is just the backup and the hardware, the storage needs. And that's, you know, the the additional costs and I'll show the additional costs here. So that's the the first set, so storage costs. And that's just some of the equipment that we would be needing, some of the software to run the equipment. Lot of this will be virtualized software. And so that's the two hundred and fifty thousand to get that piece going. And the second phase of this or the second piece of this is really just to, because of the new technology and the new hardware, we would be able to start a pilot on our kind of VDI, so our virtual desktops and our single sign on. And so once we get our storage in our backup configured and to sort of best practices, then we would kind of later in the year, start to implement and pilot just a small section, whether it's a department, a few people, the single sign on. And so that would be more of a proof of concept for the twenty two five. That price to do in enterprise wide, single sign on or virtual desktop is probably around the four hundred K mark. And so we just want to make sure that we are able to test this, get this, get the concept working really well. And get some buy in before we, you know, propose the the bigger expense moving forward. So so that's kind of where we are. Any questions?
So Jeff, thank you for the presentation. My first question is. If you can bring that slide back up.
Oh, sure, sir.
So are are we looking at onsite physical storage? Or is this describing some sort of cloud based storage or a combination there? I'm just trying to read what you've got here.
Yeah, so this would replace our onsite storage. Some of the things that we're looking at, so the air gapping and some of that other technology would probably be on the cloud. Going forward, so it'll be a hybrid, something that we don't have today.
And so for this quarter million, that would include this this air gapping concept, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then currently, you said it takes four to five days for a backup, particularly the imaging stuff. With this newer technology and upgrade, how long would you guess that same backup would take with this new upgrade?
So some of that would probably take like a day for us to back up. The new technology does different types of compression on the backups. So it really shortens the like the span of time it takes to to do backup. So besides the new technology and the, you know, faster faster servers and other things as well, so.
And you you talked about this upgrade potentially lasting five, six, maybe seven years. But maybe at the two or three year mark, we'd look to buy more storage. How much storage is currently listed here? Or is it on a cloud based service, you don't really talk that way? What what? How do you know how much storage we're getting?
Yeah, you do both. And so right now, we're currently at about twenty five terabytes. And so even on the cloud base, you are charged by the amount of storage, obviously, that you would be using besides a monthly service. And so it's it's fairly equivalent. Obviously, you pay a, you probably pay a higher price on the cloud because you're paying for a lot of this infrastructure as well as just the storage itself. So for them to house your data in a huge data center is also, you know, can can be costly in times too, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, I probably have another question too, but let some of the board members jump in here and have their thoughts.
I'm I'm very supportive of this, of what Jeff is proposing here. I think this is a really good process. We're moving ourselves forward, maybe not at the cutting edge, but we're moving it at an appropriate edge of our technology to do this, so I'm very supportive of it.
I'd like to echo Terry's sentiment and also express that I am impressed with your expertise of the subject and your ability to break it down for somebody like me who's not particularly techno tech technologically savvy. I but I understand, I think, a overview of what you're getting at here. And so I appreciate that, and I I think that this is the direction we need to go in.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any real concerns about it. Sounds good to me. And Erica is technically savvy compared to me, so.
Hey, Jeff, on the single sign on test, the ten licenses, are those like annual licenses, permanent licenses? How how do how do those licenses work?
Some will be trial, but others will be permanent licenses. So when we do get into the, you know, the enterprise wide, that that dollars carry over into into that as well, so.
And how do you see this test playing out? Do you have a time period in mind to to evaluate it? And in other words, when will you get to that point where you're ready to pull the trigger and say, let's go and invest the larger amount and do this system wide? Because it comes up in a lot of our meetings, obviously, the future efficiency improvements by doing the single sign ons. And for people that have to log in a hundred times a day, it's going to be a real relief and a nice security bump up too, I believe, so.
Yeah, and so, you know, really, I would I would say, once we get our storage handled and we move on to the single sign on, which is probably be, you know, hard to tell. But I would say probably third quarter or so, it'll probably give us, take us a couple months to really get figure out the single sign on and to really get that demo to certain areas and maybe even implemented into, you know, us my, it might take a place like ED would be, you know, valuable to at least run this through. I was involved, you know, at the other hospital actually implementing. And back then, fifteen years ago, it was cutting edge. And I almost call it the bleeding edge, implementing single sign on because there the technology was so new. And a lot of things have been figured out since then, and a lot of healthcare systems have, you know, now adopted it. And so I just want to make sure that if we, if and when we do it here, that it is kind of up to par before we present it out. Because when we get into these, every second that it takes to log on will be critically analyzed. And so what I've experienced in the past, so we just want to make sure that, you know, we we have the best working system before we do this, so.
And if you've given it in the emergency department at all, you have had a nurse, I guarantee, take you and show you how cumbersome it is to have to log in and out as you go from room to room, so.
Yep.
And so Jeff, these are essentially sequential. You would do the storage upgrade first, get all that working. Once you're content with that, you'd move on to the single sign on test?
Yeah, yeah, part of this equipment that we would be implementing in that first phase here of the storage, we would kind of piggyback some of the single sign on to run as well, so.
Perfect, well, thanks again for your time putting this presentation together because I know it came up in our financial meeting on Tuesday, just looking for some more clarity. So I appreciate you in two days, we don't put that together, so.
Not a problem, thank you.
Yeah, sure does help, yeah, appreciate it, Jeff. So we need a motion for capital expenditure.
I would move to, I would move to approve the the capital expenditure request.
Second.
Motion by John, second by, was that Erica?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. A few of us will be able to sleep better at nights.
Hey, Jeff, would you let me share or?
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. The the next part of the the. Finance, let me go, let's see. It the is the is the discussion related to our budget. And with the with the the budget. Wanted to talk a little bit about the budgeting process that we have. And and this is a budget that was built from the department level up. And Jason and I met with all of the department managers and to come up with what they were expecting to see in in two thousand and twenty one. And we we did a bit of a an analysis to see what what happened in in actuality with two thousand and twenty volumes. And then we kind of balanced that with what we actually budgeted for in two thousand and twenty also. And as you can see, that we believe that we're being pretty conservative in in that in in the the budget that we have, not being overly optimistic about volume coming through. But we're also trying to be realistic too. And so the just starting with a few of the high level stats on on this page is you can see that we're budgeting for nine hundred and twelve admissions, and that's less than we had actually budgeted for in two thousand and twenty. But, yes, sir.
Did you want your page on the screen?
Oh, is it not on the?
It's just, it's just you talking right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. How's that?
There we go, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. So yeah, so and I'm on page sixty one of of the of the financial packet. So just going down some of the, you can see the the assumptions that we had. And this is the 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 best judgment of department managers and other members of the administrative team and and Jason and myself. And so you see with what we did with admissions, patient days. Deliveries, at some point, we think we're going to be able to get over that three hundred delivery level amount. We're going to miss it in the current year, I can tell you that right now. But we are anticipating some additional surgery volume and surgery cases. And you see, you see the growth in surgery minutes. And and we're quite confident in that the the expected growth with surgeries. We have Dr. Tony Longo, which was an orthopedic surgeon that lives in Ellensburg and has been practicing in Yakima with Orthopedics Northwest for the last three years. His he continue is is coming back. He no longer has a a call obligation to work at the M Memorial. And so he was planning on working full time here in Ellensburg and being on the call rotation. And he's he was budgeting for, or I assumed he would be in surgery two full, two full days a week. We actually budgeted a little less than that, just to be conservative. We have some additional surgery volume budgeted for Dr. Mike Zammott. And he is started here on Monday. And and he has cases scheduled for Friday. And we were wondering if we were gonna, he had enough cases that we're wondering if we we're going to be able to have all the supplies and equipment that he needed so soon. So I so we are feel pretty confident about the 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 growth in surgery volume that we have. And then, as you just go down the list of of GI procedures, I hope that you can see that we're trying to be realistic, not overly optimistic, but realistic about what our surgery or volumes will be. Emergency department, urgent care, laboratory, radiology exams, rehab visits and clinic visits. Emergency department, urgent care, laboratory, radiology exams, rehab visits, and clinic visits. But this is a team budget with the whole memorial management and administrative team. And any questions or concerns about some of the stats that we have identified?
Scott, I just want to add that you're also getting a new general surgeon that does breast surgery. So besides Zammott and Longo, also adding another service here.
That's exactly right, Dr. O'Brien. We really didn't budget more for, we thought, because we knew we were losing Dr. Smith, we kind of considered Dr. Meyer Lico, is that what it is?
Yeah, Wickle, Wickle Meyer, yeah.
We thought that would be a different one. Okay, good. Thanks. So we actually did not budget any additional cases because although we're gaining this general surgeon, we're also losing one, too. So the other piece related to the budget was, is some of the assumptions related to, to, and I'll go back up to a couple pages. Is some of the assumptions related to expenses. One of the key bullets that we have that is a real driver, or excuse me, a driver of revenue is what we do with our hospital charge master. And so what we have, we assumed for this budget, we want, you know, we are sent, we know that members of the community basically pay for services that they receive here. It comes out of their pockets. And so we wanted to be as conservative as we possibly could with the increase in our hospital charge master. So what we have budgeted for is an average 2.5% charge master increase. There will be some charges on our charge master that will go up greater than that. And there will be some that are less. Particularly for some of the high-end images that we do, the MRI and CTs, we're at $6,000 and $7,000 on some of those. We lowered some of these images, charges, mortgages to a cap of $5,500. So, but on average, it's a 2.5% charge master increase. Our contracts with our commercial payers, with the exception of Kaiser, allows for an increase of up to 5%. So we're, we believe we're trying to be conservative and realistic in the charge master increase that we have budgeted for. And then another, we assume that there's going to be no change in our payer mix. It'll continue to be about 59% Medicare, Medicaid, and then 35% commercial, 2.5% self-pay, and 3.5% other. And then we also assume that we're going to continue to get some grant work or grant income, some from GCACH, and then other grant revenue that Mitchell Rhodes, our grant writer, will help generate in conjunction with some of the grants that he writes on behalf of KCHN. But some of that actually flows back through us as we help support KCHN. And then on the, so any questions about some of the revenue assumptions that we have? And then the expense assumptions are, a big piece of these expense assumptions are wage increases for WS today per our agreement with our nursing contract. And then we have a contract with Teamsters. And then other non-contracting exempt employees are, we're budgeting for a 2% increase. And we're budgeting for an increase in overall FTEs to the organization. We're going to, we're running right now about 500 FTEs. And this budget will increase the number of FTEs to about 540. And a good piece of those, chunk of increase in FTEs is related to increased surgery volume. And we're going to increase our, the number of OR suites that we offer to our own physicians and community physicians from two to three. And there is corresponding staff and supply increases related to that expansion. And then there's other FTE increases related to some of the doctors that we are hiring. And other questions about expenses?
Some of the FTEs have been just related to the COVID testing side as well. So operating that clinic full-time, that wasn't in the prior budget.
And potentially that could come out of some of the cares money. We're exploring that at some point, I believe.
That is correct. The net difference between what we receive in reimbursement and the cost of operating it. We did, Jason and I met with John and Terry to do a, what I call a deeper dive into the budget just to make sure that they understood the reporting capabilities and the analysis that goes into the budget. We think what we've done is pretty thorough and pretty complete. John or Terry, do you have anything that you would care to add?
Yeah, I would just say that definitely I was impressed by the thoroughness that you and Jason and the whole team and all the directors and stuff you work with. No matter what questions we threw at you, you could dig as deep as we wanted and be able to explain your thought process and how you made your determinations and so forth. And so I really appreciate you taking the time to go over those aspects with Terry and myself.
Yeah, that was really, really good. It gave me the ability to understand the, what's, while, how we've moved forward at KVH and why we've got 100 and almost 180 days of cash on hand. Scott's got it stored under the rug someplace, right?
We try to keep it in the bank.
The rug's just as cost-effective these days since the bank and bonds don't pay anything, so.
The last, the last part of the budget, I would just say, is that we're, in conjunction with the discussion that we heard at the beginning of the board meeting, we don't have a firm number on what the lab expansion will be yet. But we're expecting to spend about $4.5 million in capital. And at this point, just a ballpark figure on lab expansion, it's $2 to $2.5 million. But I'm, that's, I would call that a soft number. We'll have a firm number for you later. But we're expecting that capital expenditures with this budget will be about up to $5 million in that range.
So Scott, you're saying the total request for capital will approximately be $5 million in this upcoming year? Approximately half of that you could see going towards the lab portion of the refurbish?
For the renovation. And I've seen the equipment list, the equipment list that I've looked at is about $586,000 worth of additional lab equipment. And so, but for any of the board members that have been through the lab, it is needed. Well, if there's no questions, I would hope that one of the board members would accept it.
I would move to accept the 2021 budget as presented.
I second it.
Second by Terry? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 No opposed?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I like, I particularly like the summary of the volume decreases and increases that drive revenue section, where you went through last year's budget, what you expect for the next year, and then total growth. I like that section a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else, Scott?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah, you've done enough, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much.
So let's move into operations. And Chief Nursing Officer, Vicky?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My report is on page 64. It's pretty brief. I can just say that we continually seen, in fact, I've been on the phone this evening with my supervisor, COVID admissions are raising up, particularly in the inpatient areas, which just caused an additional added layer of staff weariness and tiredness. It's 12 hours taking care of these folks is demanding. They're hanging in there. Spirits seem to be overall okay. So we are feeling it on the inpatient side, especially over the last two weeks, more so than the ED. The EDC is probably five to seven a day. It has been the last two weeks that we've had at least two, if not three, per day in the house. So everybody stay well and healthy. I'll take any questions, concerns, or additional comments?
Just curious, how many inpatient folks do we have right now?
So currently, as of this evening, there are four in-house.
Okay.
Three of them in CCU, and I believe there might be one on MedSearch.
Is that four just related to COVID or four total?
Four related specifically to COVID. We, yeah, the supervisor just texted me and said that we have, for the rest of the night, we have two beds available for admissions. Otherwise, we're full.
Did we accept a Yakima transfer today?
We received a patient that we had been caring for, went to a skilled nursing facility in Yakima, did not fit in there behaviorally, and so we took it back this evening. Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, in addition to COVID, we're dealing with difficulty in placing the more elderly patients that require skilled nursing because there are some facilities that are COVID-only. There are some not taking any COVID. There are some on restriction because of staffing. So that's just another little hurdle we're having to deal with.
Vicky, how long, I know that every case is different, but is there a general length of stay for COVID patients at our hospital or an average that you're finding?
Yeah, most of them are here, minimum of five, maximum, I think, two weeks. Occasionally, we'll get one that just needs just a couple of days. And it's usually because more anxiety-ridden and just scared rather than being just ill. So those, we don't see too many of those anymore. When COVID first hit, we had more of those type of patients that were just more worried sick.
What is our ability to transfer patients elsewhere if needed? What is that looking like?
It's not looking great. The ER is having difficulty. Memorial in Yakima has been, I did the transfers list yesterday, and we sent five of them to Confluence. Three were cardiac, and one was a surgical patient, which was theirs initially. Confluence seems to wax and wane. Memorial seems to struggle probably more consistently in placing. And of course, Harborview, they will take all of our traumas and have, but they are, they're very, very full, and patients are waiting in their ERs.
Thank you. That's kind of grim, but unexpected.
Right, right.
Any other questions, Vicky?
I'll just mention one more thing, and that is that we've basically closed down for inpatient surgery now. So people needing total joints, et cetera, are not getting them now with us at this time.
Dr. O'Brien, I was actually going to mention that during my report out, that Vicky and myself and Amy Krogstad and Julie worked together early December, seeing what was happening and knowing that the holidays were coming upon us, seeing the beds fill up, seeing the staffing get hit, like what you saw with Mandy's report. And so with that, just took a look at January and said, the ones that, there's two questions. Will this, the surgeon, that the surgeon has to determine, and that's if the delay would cause any harm or if the delay would worsen the condition. And of course, if the answer is yes, then they stay on the schedule. So in total, we shifted to inpatients, pre-scheduled surgeries. And then have just asked that, they asked the surgeon, ask that question for any other ones that are potential inpatient, just again, so we can keep a handle on the beds. Yeah, interestingly enough, however, at this time, it really hasn't impacted us this week. I think we've had four total hips due to elderly people who have fallen. So they're still doing surgery, and those are the folks that I say are difficult to place afterwards just because of the recovery and mobility issues.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Vicky.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next is Chief Ancillary Officer, Rhonda.
Hi, my report is on page 64 and 65, and I don't believe I have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a comment. Just another month of chronicling how people are stepping up and filling in where needed. And see, a lot of names on here are people who have done just that in areas that aren't necessarily their usual areas, but the need is there, and so they do it. And I think that's tremendous.
Yeah. We have a wonderful staff. I think the whole KVH family has participated in our vaccination clinic, and they've all really enjoyed it. I think it's been something that they'll always remember.
It's a great job to work with such awesome people. That's why I can't stop working.
I mean, the little things like, you know, and Rhonda included, going up to Clealum and giving vaccination to those really high-risk group home folks. I mean, that's, you know, those little things really are significant for our community.
Yeah, it's been great.
So any other questions or comments?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Carrie, Chief of Clinic Operations.
Good evening. So since Dr. O'Brien stole my thunder, and now I don't have anything else to add to my report, my report is on 66 and 67, and I'd be happy to take any questions. And then just to comment to what you all were talking about, we And then just to comment to, to what you all were talking about, we do have one of our nurses who has been working in the department here at KVH, and she has worked here for nine years, and she said she's just really enjoyed getting to meet additional folks that she's, like her and I have never met, because she works in the evenings, and she is kind of tucked away in her department. And so it's just been really fun for her to, to meet new people.
He's in it for the glow-in-the-dark, great big vest that she gets to wear when she's the air traffic controller.
That's true, since Julie's forced people to wear the incredibly attractive vest.
You are wearing the best.
What is the criteria to be bestowed with the vest?
You're the air traffic controller. You, you're a nurse. We need to go, hey, over here, we need you, so.
Very cool.
Can I just invite you, and I don't know which of you have been over there, but you know, I think a year or so ago, we remodeled the multiplex suite C when Dr. Wells moved out, and now we have redone Dr. Sands' office to accommodate Carrie's general surgery and vascular folks. That is exceptionally well-spent money. I, we basically have brand-new, state-of-the-art, really, really nice physician offices now. And if you will recall, they looked like something out of the seventies when we went in there. So just a really, really valuable refresh that we're doing on those areas. And you can anticipate that our orthopedic surgeons are going to want something similar in the near future, and I would endorse it as a good investment, I think. So if you haven't seen the new general surgery area, it's very nice, so.
Yeah, I just saw my first patients today over there, and it's, it's incredibly awesome. Great job.
Good. And that's, that's Rhonda and his team that deserve all of that credit.
Great. Anything else? Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right, so education board reports really don't have anything there.
Bob, we do have, sorry to, sorry to interrupt, Bob. I don't know if this is the place for it, but just one quick update. I think you guys know that, that there's a regional triage team for Eastern Washington regarding, you know, if, if we ever have to triage people for ICU beds and things like that and treatment. Dr. Hibbs, Dr. Martin, and I are on that. I'm on that, not as my position on the board, but as a medical ethicist at Central. And we just started the crisis standard care regional triage team. The way they put it is we're operational, but we're not activated. So in other words, we haven't had to make any triage decisions yet, but we're ready to. And we just started a couple days ago, having people rotating on call because things are a little dicey. There aren't a whole lot of ICU beds available, staffed ICU beds in Eastern Washington. They're, they're actually fairly low. They're none, none in the tri-cities that are open, and, and in Wenatchee, what they call the Wenatchee cashman. We're one of the few places that actually has staffed ICU beds available right now. And Spokane, I think they have seven. So even though there was a bit of an uptick, things are still a little dicey around Eastern Washington as, as far as staffed ICU beds go. I mean, you guys have probably heard about what's happening in Los Angeles County with people sort of making triage decisions on the fly. Eastern Washington, people have been very, we've been very organized about this, and we're hoping we never actually have to make any of these decisions. But I just wanted to let you know that things are kind of up and running. And Dr. Martin, Dr. Hibbs, and I are, are on that. So if you guys ever, ever, ever have any questions about that or anything, let me know, but that's where we are right now. I just wanted to, to sort of update you on that.
Well, Matt, piggybacking on that, on the emergency prep side, so the Ready Coalition, you know, is part of that, that puts that together. We have regional meetings every, I think they're Tuesday. And it's pretty telling when we started those regional meetings, we're discussing exactly what you're talking about from a facility level on availability, EMS transports, things like that. When we started these meetings, we would be lucky if we had twelve to eighteen participants. And we are regularly in the fifties to sixties now every week, so people can hear firsthand and talk to one another and kind of work through issues. So hopefully, we do not have to utilize your team.
Yeah, and right now, things are being held together, and it looks like things, I mean, hopefully, things aren't going to get worse. But, but after November, and especially December, things are, are a little tough throughout Eastern Washington. And, and, you know, so we're hoping they ease up a little bit. I'll just leave it at that.
Matt, you cover, you guys cover like all of Eastern Washington?
Yeah, yeah, all of Eastern Washington, and there are other people on, you know, other people on these committees from all, all throughout Eastern Washington. A lot of people from the Spokane area, but both physicians and medical ethicists. Each, each one of these teams has three members, and two of them have to be physicians, and one of them has to be a medical ethicist. And so we're, we're, we've been doing drills and things. As I said, now we're starting to, to go on call. We haven't had to make any of those decisions, and we don't anticipate having to make any of them. But we got to see where things go in the next month. Anyway.
Oh, I was reading that in LA that they are beginning to ration oxygen, which I never thought I would ever read something as simple as oxygen being rationed. Is that something that, I mean, sorry, I have dogs in the background trying to get my attention. Is that something that we're concerned about up here? Is this something that they talk about at such meetings?
It hasn't been as much of an issue here, so.
I'm sorry. Rhonda, you want to jump in? I know you reached out to our oxygen supplier today and got some reassuring news.
Yeah, I'm having some trouble with my computer video and audio, but I'll try. Yeah, Bellevue Healthcare supplies our home oxygen concentrators, and they said that they have plenty of supply. They, they aren't seeing any concerns with that. And then Jim reached out to Oxarc, where we get our oxygen as well, and they weren't foreseeing any difficulties.
Yeah, the
Witness relief.
Things have changed a little bit, you know, early on. I mean, many months ago, the worry was that we wouldn't have enough ventilators. But now we're realizing that's not as much of an issue. The big issue seems to be ICU beds and, and staff. And right now, that's the, so not oxygen as much, but, but that seems to be a problem. So, yeah, that's what we're looking at right now.
Thank you.
Anyway, Bob didn't mean to, just wanted
No, I'm glad we have good, solid representation, like the three of you and not like local politicians making those decisions. Anyway, yeah, any other discussion? We do have under old business, our board self-evaluation.
So, so Bob, can I ask a favor?
Yeah.
There's nothing else I don't think on the agenda that would engage most of the senior leaders here, and there's no one that I needed executive session. These folks have had a long week.
Oh, yeah. You bet.
Can we invite them to go?
Yeah, feel free to.
Go home or?
Lick off.
Otherwise, they turn their cameras off and sneak away anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate everybody here and appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Bye. Thank you. Good night.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
That was very thoughtful, Julie.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, yeah, do you want to head off, head it off, Julie, or?
Yeah, so we have Greg Davidson and Nancy Steger here, and they are going to tell you about the board self-evaluation process and, and take you through the website. The process, there's a survey that Commissioner Ward and Bob worked on together with, with Greg and Nancy to refine. There's a short turnaround time for you to go out and answer the questions and make your comments. And Greg and Nancy will be back at the end of January to review sort of where we're at and pick some areas for the board to work on in 2021. So with that, I think I'm kicking it off to Greg.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you, and this brings back a lot of memories of board meetings. I had about over thirty years of public district hospital board meetings under my belt, so brought back a lot of fond memories. So actually, I'm, we're excited to be working with you on this project. You know, the date that is branded in my brain is April third, two thousand twenty. And if you recall, that was the day you were going to have a board retreat on a Saturday. And we were all prepared to talk to you about strategic planning, and this thing called COVID came along and completely threw a wrench in, in our gears. So anyway, we're excited to hopefully re-address that here later in the year. We've been talking, Julie, but it's a pleasure to be working you with on this board development. And I'm going to turn it over to Nancy, who's going to get into the specifics. You're muted.
Here we go. Sorry about that. Good evening. It's nice to be with you as well. Julie, do you, do you have the survey in front of you, or do you want me to share my screen, or?
Why don't, why don't you go ahead and share your screen?
Okay. All right, so again, thanks for inviting us to participate, and congratulations on embarking on a board self-evaluation. I would say it's one of the most important jobs a board does is to, to really introspect and look at themselves and say, how are we doing in terms of our duty to lead this organization? What I have on my screen is a survey that we proposed to Julie and your exec committee, and we made some modifications. And this is where we are today. What we are proposing is that we will send this out to you by email and give you a specified amount of time, usually about a week, for you to complete this. The survey has seven areas. It's got mission vision and planning oversight. It has patient safety, quality, patient satisfaction, and organizational health oversight. It has, I think I want to pass one, a stewardship compensation and benefits. It has corporate responsibility and audit, management oversight, board effectiveness, and here we go, additional comments, and then individual assessments. How do you rate yourself as a board member? So I'm sorry, I'm going to scroll back to the front and just show you how it works. So the first question is, how do we as board members assure that our decisions are consistent and further the mission, vision, and values? And so you have the opportunity to score from strongly disagree to agree. And that's, that's how you will do that. And then we encourage you to put in comments. So at the end of each section, there's an area for you to write in comments. And then at the end of the survey, there's a place for you to put your name. And Julie, you may want to speak to this, but I think the committee and Julie thought it would be useful if board members did put their names in and had accountability for their perspective.
Yeah, I just think, A, given that one of our values is transparency, and that the, the value of this process really relies on candor, it seemed sort of odd to have comments being anonymous, so.
Right. So what we would do, and Julie, it's up to you, but I was thinking either tonight, tomorrow, we can send out the link to the survey. And tomorrow's the eighth, maybe we, you set the timeline, but if tomorrow's the eighth, we say we want it back by the sixteenth, and then we have the results ready for you at your next meeting. We would prepare an analysis of your results and PowerPoint and generate a discussion about what areas you would wish to work on and pursue based on the feedback of the survey. So that's a very high-level overview of kind of what we're proposing, and I welcome any comments, questions, or dialogue.
I would just point out, one of the other decisions that was made along the way is that only board members would be participating in this, so there wouldn't be a sort of three sixty element at all, so.
And then on the, to add commentary, you just want, if you disagree, commentary or any commentary?
Any commentary. So you could say, I think we do a really good job, and the mission is very central to everything we do. Or not sure if we incorporate mission enough. So you would really welcome your, your self-assessment, positive, negative, constructive, kind of how are we doing? You know, you have a very important responsibility to the, not only to the organization, but to the community. And when you get to this level of an organization, it's hard to get feedback. And I'm a big believer that self-reflection is really useful. I've been very involved in the Washington State Hospital Association, and I've been at a lot of their governance conferences and, you know, wishes very supportive of this behavior. And, and as I ran organizations, I ran St. Joseph Medical Center in Bellingham and the whole Northwest Network for, for Bellingham. And the board self-evaluation was always a very, a very important and reflective time for the governing board. And I can tell you that every time we did this, something very good came out of it, not only for the board, but, and not only for the medical center, but for the community that we served.
Julie, what's involved in a three sixty evaluation? Does that mean other people, it's not just a self-evaluation?
Yeah, it, that would be similar to the process that you used for my evaluation, where you talk to people who report to me and.
All right, okay.
And of course, as you, over the, the course of years, you can decide to do that later, or, you know, a subsequent year if you so desire. Some places actually will use their medical staff leadership, maybe some people in the community. There's different things, but as Nancy said, I think for this purpose, we're just going to keep it here. And I too have had a lot of experience helping organizations do this, and I think probably the biggest value is when you get the results and you start talking amongst yourselves. And it's really good to get alignment on what everyone believes or, or perceptions and, you know, celebrate the things that you're doing a great job on, and then look for a couple areas where you could actually see some potential improvement. And I, and it's also, I think, very useful to, to your CEO to, to be involved in those discussions because there's so much overlap between, you know, board function and, and hers. And of course, Julie's role goes to operations, so she's the link there. And then, of course, you have the link to the community and then the link to the medical staff.
So two questions. I mean, this would be electronic version, and this is just the first step. So you'll take it, kind of collate it together, then we'll kind of dive into specific areas.
That's right. It's all electronic, and the system I use actually does the collation for us. So it's, it's really very helpful. It's really done nicely, and then we'll have a PowerPoint with all of the results and all the comments.
So is the idea that, that we would have this discussion at the end of the next regular board meeting?
Is that your thinking?
Yep.
I did, I got one more comment. Since I'm a new commissioner, I've only been on the board for a year. I do would like to maybe have a three sixty evaluation. Maybe that's something we might want to do, maybe not to all the board members, but maybe might, might be a policy we might want to look at as we have new board members come on, have other board members kind of chat with you, because I really appreciate corrective, you know, information about how I can be a better board member, or how I can, you know, exceed people's expectations better. So I guess, I think once we go through our self-evaluation, there may be some comments and discussion. You know, as long as Julie doesn't put it up on the wall in the post office, some people see it. But I do like to have, I always appreciated my evaluations in my, in my jobs regarding that because, you know, we want to, our, see our organization to succeed. As an elected commissioner, I want to make sure that I'm doing the the proper stuff for the organization. So anyway, that's just my comment.
One of the best practices I've seen is that, you know, boards do lots of different things, but one that I think works really well is in advance of somebody's term coming up is the three sixties done on a board member who's about to renew. But you could do a three sixty, you know, anytime you want. I think for the purposes of this exercise, I think we wanted to get a baseline for the whole board and then you could decide if you wanted to be broader at some other time. It's doable. It's very doable.
I also think that a board three sixty would be beneficial. I don't necessarily think that on an individual basis it would be as appealing, although I mean we we could address individual issues as we go, but as as a board, I think it would be exceptionally helpful because I got to thinking, I mean, what other evaluation do we have other than every six years getting elected, right? You know, I mean, sure, people can tell us that, you know, they hate our guts on social media if they want, but I think that organizationally, an evaluation of that sort would be highly beneficial.
Well, this is very easy to customize to an individual level if and when you're interested.
So Nancy, is there any reason that the board wants to include the senior leadership team and the the chief of staff that we can't do it on this iteration?
We actually kind of need to edit it. At the bottom, we could put in a place for, you know, who's answering the question. My guess is you, I know you want the board members to be transparent with their names, but you might want anonymity for the other people. And so you might want to just say, well, I guess there'd be a category for executive staff.
So if that's something the board wants to do, it sounds like something we can move ahead with.
I just need to get them. I have somebody who, you know, does the survey for me, so she's better than I am, so I would have her make sure it looked in.
I would love to evaluate Matt. Bring it on, Bob. I've been writing down all the things you've been doing wrong.
You guys.
Of course, he gets evaluated every quarter, so. And by little punks, not you.
I would like to see the feedback from the senior leadership and that could be just, you know, they could just write in the bottom of their evaluation as this SLT or something like that. We wouldn't need to know who they were, but I, you know, senior leadership and our interaction with them, Julie actually supports that. So I guess we should like to know whether that interaction is happening and it's happening enough.
But would we, I mean, could we? John and you and Bob looked at this survey a lot more closely, but is, I mean, is that appropriate for SLT members to do or would we have to develop a new survey?
I wouldn't do a new survey. I think you're just, it just gets more complicated. I my my experience with executives is they would be prepared to opine on these questions.
Okay, so there so the questions are such that it would allow them to reflect on our performance.
Yes. What it's not going to do is do individuals, so they're be evaluating you as a board as a whole. So if one of you is really stellar or not stellar, you won't sort that out. They will be evaluating your performance as a group.
Could we just add a line, specific criticism about Bob? We could invite people. The I override that statement. I delete it from minutes here. So my my take is with having a new board dynamic is, I mean, I think we need to focus on the board. And if we want to look at maybe even, you know, we have a couple of board members that are up for election, so we could do something. You know, if that kind of would help them or get them more down the road next year, but I, you know, I I I'm more concerned about trying to get, you know, what the board feel us group, how we feel. Yeah, it's important what senior leadership feels, but I think it's, I think we need to kind of get all on the right page and kind of feel like, okay, you know, where are our strengths? How do we use these strengths a certain way and make sure we're all feeling like we're on the same page? Are you suggesting, are you suggesting, Bob, that getting SLT involved here might be a little distracting from our focus on our own? Yeah, I think I think for me, at least the main focus is the the board. And, you know, us trying to make sure we're gelling and kind of all moving in the right direction and feel like we know we're doing things the way we need to be doing versus I mean, I don't, I have no problem with senior leadership evaluating. I mean, I have no problem at all. But because I don't know if it really gets to where we want to be. It would be more information, I guess.
Is it more a matter of when, not if for you, Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I'm totally okay if we want to wait, do it again, do it next year, you know, have a more intensive review. But I think the importance is we have two new board members that we get, really get everybody engaged, involved and make sure we're all moving in the, you know, right direction and have you know, the ability to just communicate with each other that this is, this is our focus and direction we want to move. But now I'll do whatever, whatever everybody else wants to do.
Well, like I don't think there's anything, there's not a right or wrong answer, but I think, you know, going ahead with just the board at this time, I think is an acceptable approach. You know, and I guess, you know, beyond that, you know, you you may also want to consider sequencing and timing when you do this. I just worked with a client who actually synchronized the board self evaluation within the evaluation of the CEO. And then they did this in preparation for their next year budget and planning. So everything that came out of that discussion as far as strengths and areas of development. In essence, the board came out with an action plan for the next year. The CEO came out with an action plan and then, of course, that all spills over into your institutional plan for the coming year. So there's some different approaches you can look at. You know, between now and probably next fall, when you, when you start heading into 2022 planning that can coincide with these efforts.
Yeah, we had talked about kind of changing up our CEO evaluation process for next year. So that that may, I don't know, what Terry, John, what do you guys, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think that, you know, we could move forward. We got a lot of stuff on our plate right now. And we could look at that. I I think let's do this evaluation, get it done, review it, and then we can decide that to see whether Matt wants to put me in front of you instead of having it going all about Bob, all right?
So from a timing standpoint, eight days to fill this out, then it'd be kind of looked at and consolidated and presented at the next board meeting. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And is that just a quick presentation or is there a detailed discussion that the five board members will enter into based on that material you provide?
I think.
No, I think that's up to you all. You know, I you don't do this very often, so, you know, we would recommend that you do have time for a thorough discussion because I think that's where where you're really going to get the value out of the out of the results. You know, the numbers are just numbers, but truly understanding and you know, seeking alignment and in agreement amongst all of you is is ultimately what you're trying to achieve here.
So I would be, I would be nervous about trying to add that sort of discussion to a three hour board meeting already. So I would propose that that after you present the information at some point in the near future, after that, we schedule a separate meeting where we can take as much time as we want to talk about these concepts you've presented. We're a little bit more rested. I mean, I don't know about the rest of you, but after three or four hours, I need a little break from sitting in front of the screen. So I'd rather break the, you know, the the real digging into the details discussion for a separate separate meeting. And then separately on the senior leadership as a compromise, I would propose rather than them taking the questionnaire, maybe just giving them the opportunity to write a short narrative about their thoughts on how the board is doing that you can just add, it's kind of just some general, you know, comments. If I'm doing something really wrong in the eyes of senior leadership, I'd rather know it now than a year from now. If it's something that I can work on correcting. So I don't know that the questions you you listed are that useful for senior leadership, but I certainly think their thoughts are useful, even a short paragraph for anybody who's interested. I think there might be something in there that would add to our discussion when the day comes for us to evaluate these results.
So I have, we have a afternoon long senior leadership meeting next Tuesday. I would be happy to run the team through the survey and just sort of to John's point, just talk about key thoughts or, you know, if have a conversation about whether there's a important message they'd like to the board to hear. I mean, that's one way we can approach it rather than having them all go log on and.
Yeah, I think that's a great compromise. And then I think it'd be the filter of them being anonymous, anonymous. You know, you you'll know who it is. You can dig for more detail.
I'm going to rat them all out.
I do. I do have one question about that. I think it's a good idea. And I think that, you know, as we've seen that sometimes they're a little more willing to speak in that sort of format than to write it down in a survey. Same thing with the CEO evaluation. The only, the only hesitation I have is the CEO's relationship with the board. Let's see, how do I put this? It might be hard for you to come to the board and say, look, senior leadership team tells me that you guys are doing these three things lousely. You know, and not only that, board member X is a real pain in the butt and we think he needs to check himself. You know, I mean, it might be hard for the CEO to do that with the board. Do you, I mean, Julie, is that going to put you in an awkward position of actually being honest with us?
No, and and if I run into something like that, I'd be happy to use Nancy and Greg as kind of a buffer there is. You know, I don't think the Oxford comma is going to come up again this year in the the board evaluation, but I would be if something like that did come up, I'd be happy. I'd just bounce it off of Greg and Nancy.
Okay. I just didn't want to put you into a bad position where you wouldn't feel like you could tell. All right, I that I think that sounds good.
Yeah, I'm fine. I I think it's a part, sorry, particularly important for senior leadership to let us know, you know, if we're offering them what they need. And I don't want to be tone deaf to that and skip this opportunity. So I'm appreciative of this.
All right, so.
Send it tomorrow?
Yep. And Julie, you have the link, so you can just send it to the board, but let's agree on when we want it back. Because we and I, and you know, we didn't address the point about John's point about how we discuss it. I I don't know what the rest of you think, but I am sensitive to your comments, John, that, you know, this is a long board meeting and this is this bucket of work, this body of work for the board is big in and of itself. So do we want to just present that at the next meeting and have another time for discussion or how do you want to handle that?
We could, I mean, we could have a special meeting where we spend a hour, hour and a half and weeding through that.
I'm along with John. I would like to do the same thing. These meetings get to be quite long. And whether we're doing it on Zoom or whether we're doing it in person, I think we reached a point of towards the end of the meeting is no longer as productive as it was. So I think that we need to look at, you know, making these meetings as efficient as we can and not drawn out as long. This discussion about the our board evaluation has drawn this meeting out quite long. And we still have a fairly long executive session to go on. So I think that I would suggest that we may get maybe a a report, exact report, but then we have a large discussion about it at a separate meeting. Is that good with you, John?
Yes, I'm in full agreement with that.
Well, and the other benefit of that is it gives you some time to to see the results and reflect on those before you get back together. So I think I think that would make it a very worthwhile discussion.
Time for the anger to fade.
There's nothing I like more than extra meetings where we can talk about our shortcomings.
We'll make sure you celebrate your your sentences.
Okay. So let's see, is that okay, Julie?
Absolutely. Yep, I'm on it. Expect an email from me tomorrow.
Yeah, so Mandy can help coordinate find a day that will work everybody after next, after the next board meeting.
Correct.
This has, if this has all of us, it has to be a public meeting?
Actually, no, it does not because you are all five employees of the district and personnel issues can be taken into executive session. So I did. I did run that by the attorneys.
That's good. I was worried about that a little bit. All right. Thank you.
Julie, I think the other thing and we talked about this earlier, we used to always put draft on the first report. And then you guys can decide when you want to accept it. Because once you accept it, it becomes a public document. Yeah.
So it may be a perpetual draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we agree that the fifteenth is the date it'll be completed by? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then subsequent to that, we'll schedule our meeting and Julie will work with you to do that. But once it's in, it will not take us, you know, we'll get the results pretty quickly. And then Greg and I'll spend some time looking at it and getting our presentation to you ready.
Thank you, Greg and Nancy, for doing all this work behind the scenes to get this ready.
Sure. Our pleasure.
Yeah. I know you have more business for tonight, so I'm happy to, and Greg is to answer any other questions, but if not, we'll look forward to getting the results back and having a really robust conversation about what you're doing well and what improvements you might be interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Good night.
Good night.
So is there anything else before we move into the executive session? So will you, you want to take a few minute break?
You want to reconvene at eight?
Eight o'clock. Okay, so we're going to go how long do you think you'll need, Julie?
I need a total of seven minutes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, then let's take a two, why don't we take a one minute break?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got scared it was going to be an hour long discussion.
Well, so Bob, you wanted time afterwards.
Yeah, I just wanted to have some discussion on our, the email that the the document you guys received. I forgot CEO evaluation.
Yeah, and okay, so Mandy is going to keep this meeting open. So if there's going to be action so that we can come back into this meeting, I will leave, but you guys can take action in the regular meeting.
Okay. So do you guys want to just flip over back into executive then?
So I leave this meeting, but it stays open. Is that what's happening?
Yep, the link will still be live.
Okay.
And what time, Bob, should we log back in?
Right now.
To the executive. Yeah.
To the executive.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. See you in a minute.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you, guys. Good night.